Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the call of the role, please, to establish court.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Ashby will be absent this evening. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon again, everyone. If everyone could please rise, I would ask Councilmember Jennings to plead, please lead us in the land acknowledgement and then the pledge of allegiance.
It's my pleasure, Mayor, as soon as it pops on the screen. If you're not already standing, would everyone please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nissan people, the Southern Madu, the Valley and Plains, Miwok, Patwin, Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today in these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. And again, a good afternoon to my colleagues, the city staff, and always, most importantly, the members of the public. We do have three presentations today. I'd like to begin with a very special presentation by Councilmember Jennings, commemorating the achievement, the rank of Eagle Scout for a number of young Sacramentans. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and to the entire Sacramento community. As you said, this is recognizing members of Troop 136 on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And that is, that is definitely, you know, outstanding. I'm so proud of all of them. So I want to let you know that this is 26th, but on May the 15th of 2022, the Scout Troop 136 will honor nine of their members for achieving this prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. This resolution, the one that's over my head, to my left, you can see it right above my head. This resolution is our way of congratulating the troops for this momentous accomplishment, both on an individual level of the Eagle Scouts themselves and by the organization, which has now produced an incredible number of over 130 Eagle Scouts since its inception in 1987. That is just incredible. You may not know this, but Scout Troop 136 is commonly known as the Zoo Troop. That's right, the Zoo Troop, which chartered, was chartered through the Sacramento Zoological Society in 1987. To date, over 700 scouts from throughout Sacramento region have been a part of the troop, producing 130 Eagle Scouts and providing countless hours of service to the community and to everywhere that they touch. This occasion especially joyous because it marks the first female members of Troop 136 to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. So not only just the nine, but also our first female member. So I'm especially proud of that. These nine scouts have made their family, their community, this council, and the entire city of Sacramento proud in the long, proud line of Eagle Scouts from 136. I'd like to call them each by name, just so they get the proper recognition. We'd like to recognize and congratulate Nathaniel Benner, Evan Eldridge, Alexander Eldridge, Noble Mahan, Reagan Mar, Santiago Ortiz, Andrew Van Wagner, Andrew Lee, and Lucas Zau for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And we congratulate Troop 136 for producing nine more Eagle Scouts, adding to their incredible track record of excellence. I have a resolution behind me that says all of this and signed by the entire council. We're going to issue it on this 26th day of April, 2022. Here to say a few words is the Scout Master and the one that's responsible for these nine of Troop 136, also known as the Zoo Troop, is Mr. Tom Moore. Mr. Tom Moore here.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm Tom Moore, as you mentioned, Scout Master of Troop 136. The adult leadership of Troop 136 is extremely proud of these nine scouts that you honor here tonight. That you honor here tonight. Their dedication to scouting truly exemplifies the scout law. The scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. It has been an honor and a privilege for the troop and me personally to have witnessed these scouts mature into responsible young adults. They represent the very best of what the cities of Sacramento's youth should aspire to become. Thank you.
It'll be my privilege to present you with this wonderful resolution from the city of Sacramento that you can hold proudly on your wall so that you can show other young kids what is possible and what many have already done. So I will make plans to get this to you personally and/or any designate that you say. And so again, congratulations on behalf of our mayor and the city council.
Really a tremendous achievement, such hard work, right? And just keep applying yourself throughout life the way you applied yourselves to becoming Eagle Scouts. You're going to have a very successful life, I'm sure. It's wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Let us now move to the second presentation, which is Councilmember Harris commemorating Arbor Day.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I have been fortunate to do every year that I've been on council. You know, we are the city of trees. We've been recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 45 years as Tree City USA. There's a reason for that, and probably the biggest reason is the Tree Foundation, which was formed about 40 years ago, partly as a strategy to help close down Rancho Seco Nuclear Power Plant by vegetating our, our city and getting a great tree canopy up to reduce air conditioner use and reduce the need for electricity from Rancho Seco. It ended up, you know, an effort to plant over a million trees in Sacramento, and we enjoy the benefits of the work of the people who came before us working with the Tree Foundation in that we have one of the finest tree canopies in the world. And it is, you know, it is a pleasure to live with that shade. But now it's becoming actually an existential issue. And one of our biggest responses to climate change is to increase our tree canopy and certainly to try to make it more equitable and get to all the tree deserts which happen throughout our city. So, you know, this, on this day, we recognize Arbor Day. It's, this is the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day in, in our country. It's, it's actually also the 50th anniversary of the Friends of the UCD Arboretum and Public Garden. Just an interesting side note, 50 years ago, I worked at the UC Davis Arboretum. As a student there, I collected seeds and sorted them and cataloged them so that the incredible tree specimens they have at our arboretum could be propagated. So this is something that's been meaningful to me my whole life. I'm very proud of our city for having the canopy that we have. And I'd also like to give a big shout out to our Department of Public Works and especially our urban forestry department. Last week, as you know, we entertained an item about the Del Rio Trail and the removal of 300 and some trees to affect that project. The fact of the matter is, yes, you know, to, to make progress, to encourage development, to encourage alternate forms of transportation, and to do flood control projects, we have to remove trees. This is just part of what we do as a city, but we also replant at a really robust rate. In the Del Rio Trail, we're going back with over 800 trees. You know, in the River Park project from the Army Corps, the mitigation is two to one. And the fact of the matter is, we're doing a good job at promoting and preserving our tree canopy, you know, under the, the auspice of our urban forestry department and Kevin Hawker and all the great people who work for us on our city crew. So that's pretty much the deal. We are really, we really are known as the city of trees. And again, we, we have maybe the third best tree canopy in the world is something to be very proud of. But we need to keep moving. We need to plant more trees and get ready for the climate change issues that are upon us and the heat changes that are coming with climate change. So that being said, I'll just read the last paragraph here if I can get to it real quick. Yeah. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we hereby recognize the achievements of the city of Sacramento, the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and recognize March 7th as California Arbor Day and April 29th, '22 as National Arbor Day, and encourage all residents to celebrate and recognize the community's efforts to plant, protect, and preserve our trees for future generations. And is Kevin Hawker here? Is he on the line? Or anybody from Public Works want to say a couple of words about Arbor Day? There he is.
Just trying to start my video. Gavin? Yeah, here I am. So every year you, you say eloquent words about Arbor Day, leaving very little for me to, to add. One thing that I would like to say is that remind everybody that our urban forest didn't happen by accident. When the city was started, and we've been celebrating Arbor Day and planting trees long before Arbor Day was even a holiday, going back almost 170 years, we were known as the city of plains. All the trees that were planted here were a deliberate effort. We often say that Arbor Day is a day of looking forward, but this is one time I, one time I'd like to make an exception, look backwards. Let's look back at the 150 years of Arbor Day, 170 years of planting trees and history in Sacramento, the last 40 years of the Tree Foundation, the last, you know, 45 years of being a Tree City USA, all the effort it took to plant those trees, to care for those trees, to, to make those decisions of where to plant the trees and where to remove trees and how many to plant back in their place. And I can't help but reflecting on, on that and noticing even the work of the council and the members and, and the mayor, times that I've seen each of you out there planting a tree yourselves, times that I've seen you make hard decisions about where trees need to go and where trees should stay. And I'd like to just hope that everybody takes a moment to reflect on what it took to get where we are today and where we still have to go in the journey. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, and thank you very much to everyone. Let finally recognize Child Care Provider Appreciation Day. Should be every day. Councilmember Gata.
Thank you. Yes, should be every day. I agree. And Mr. Mayor, I will say that Child Care Appreciation Day was started back in 1996 by a group of volunteers who saw the need to recognize and organize and support the work of our childcare providers. And many of our providers are in-home providers, and many of our childcare providers also are employers who support our workers. So I would say that, you know, we need to support our childcare providers and our childcare workers all in the same. An important statistic here, you know, before we pass it off to Tracy Strack from Child Action as our executive director for Child Action, and Maria Lopez is a local family childcare home provider, is that over the last two years, our workforce in California, and in particularly in Sacramento too, has shrunk by 30%. You know, many of you have seen sometimes when Matias is napping, he's not here, but when he's awake, he's with me because there is a shortage in childcare right now, particularly with infant care. And so there's many efforts. I want to do thank our council and also members of the county board of vets, which has been the left convinced, and who joined me in creating a countywide task force with Head Start and, and many of others providers to look at how do we address this charter shortage? Because we do know that, that 80% of a child's development happens before the age of three and that almost over 90% of the child's development happens over the age, by the age of five. So our childcare providers aren't only providing a workforce necessary tool for families to get back to work, but they're making sure that our kids are ready and able and prepared. So with that, I will again say thank you to our city of Sacramento Yipsey team for their work. Our new also childcare manager, as well, even the city of Sacramento is doing its part in helping fill and fit, fill the need of before and after school care as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, before I read part of the resolution, let me pass it over to Tracy Strack, our Child Action Executive Director. See Tracy, are you there? And if not, then let's, let's pass it over to Maria Lopez. Well, I guess they're not there right now. So, well, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and read the resolution here.
Tracy is joining us now.
And, oh, there, there we go. Thank you. We'll take Tracy or Maria? Hi, Tracy.
Hi. I'm Tracy Strack, Executive Director of Child Action, Inc. Honorable Mayor and council members, on behalf of Child Action and the Sacramento Childcare Community, we would like to thank you for recognizing the valuable contributions of our early childhood educators through this resolution. Moreover, we greatly appreciate the city of Sacramento's dedication of American Rescue Plan Act dollars towards our childcare community. These actions are representative of the mayor and council's vested interest in Sacramento's families and early educators. In practice, our city leaders are actively involved with Child Action's work on a daily basis. Together, we work to empower Sacramento's families and childcare professionals with the support services they need to successfully help our children thrive. We value our childcare providers and the families they serve. Our childcare providers have been working tirelessly throughout the pandemic to support our littlest learners and their families. Throughout the pandemic, our early educators continue to support families despite reduced income and increased expenses. Thank you so much for recognizing the important role childcare providers play in our community.
Thank you so much, Tracy. Maria, thank you for, for sharing us your thoughts here today.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for recognizing the importance of childcare field. Families who use childcare know that we work with our hands as well as our heart. We provide a safe learning space for our little ones, especially during those critical times, zero to five. It feels great to be seen in our community. Speaking for myself and other providers, we take pride in our work. Fun have kind of helped us stay afloat during challenging times, and I really hope that it continues to help us remain strong in our field. And a little side note, I'm from District Three, and last year we had the challenging, we had a tree that was old and that's, my daycare has the inside classroom as well as an outside classroom, and that tree was the main source of shade. We had to cut it down. So this week, we're having our city do a phone call to replant the tree. So I'm excited to show as part of my daycare, you know, how we're continuing to improve our community and being part of, you know, help, help from the city of Sacramento for our own community. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Maria, and appreciate your commitment to the city of trees and Arbor Day as well. But, Mr. Mayor, again, I'd like to one thank also Janine Cooper, who's our childcare manager in economic development. Thank you, Maria Lopez and Child Action. We've got, you know, first five who's been engaged with all our efforts here. And, you know, one, I'll read here the, the last where as and therefore whereas our future depends on the equality, early care and education provided to young children today. Support for providers of high-quality childcare represent a, a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now there be it resolved at the mayor and city council in the city of Sacramento. And we do hereby recognize May 6th as Provider Appreciation Day in the city of Sacramento and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. And I do want to also thank our advocacy team for their legislative lobbying efforts to make sure that we are looking for support, funding, make sure our providers are protected and funded in this legislative cycle. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate all you providers out there. Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Good. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Gata for bringing this word. Good way to start the meeting here to really recognize a lot of great unsung work going on throughout our community. And that was really, really important. Members, let us begin the business of the evening with the consent calendar. Is there any items that members would like to take up separately? Take up separately?
So, Mr. Mayor, I did have a request from staff to, to continue items 16 and 18 to the May 10th meeting.
Yes, 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 16 and 18. Yes, these have been, I know, discussed with the proponents as well. Certainly with item 16, I think it's appropriate, it's fine, in case there are questions. Okay, 16 and 18 then would be continued as part, or, well, let us continue 18 right now. How about that? Can I get a motion to continue item 18?
So moved.
Second. Second, let's call the role to continue your item, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, okay, that'll be continued. Let's, are there any other items on the consent calendar that members want to take up separately? I don't see any. I'll take a motion, then on the consent calendar, which will include continuing item 16.
So moved.
Second.
Second, move the second as a public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, do you have one hand raised to make comments on the consent calendar? Liz Lorland Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Liz Loran Williams calling in today on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership and the Old Sacramento Advisory Committee to convey our strong support for item number eight on the consent calendar, the proposed ordinance amendment related to the public docks. We would like to acknowledge the work of city staff, including the city manager's office, Sacramento Police Department, and the Convention and Cultural Services Department for their diligence in this process and engagement with our stakeholder group. The proposed amendments provide additional tools for reasonable management of this shared asset and will be fundamental in ensuring the public docks be safe and equitable space moving forward. We appreciate the opportunity to comment today and look forward to our continued partnership on strategic initiatives to prioritize public safety and drive positive economic activity to our waterfront. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Members, if there's no other public testimony, let's call the role on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes, that leaves us one item tonight, members, and that is item 19, the quarterly climate update. I'm sorry, did I miss one? I did, I apologize. I missed.
Item.
North Atomas Public Facilities Land Acquisition. That's right. That's item 17. Presenting on that.
Oh, Mary, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, I was talking to the presenter. She was speaking and.
Oh, okay. Who is, okay, let's see.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers, this is Sherry Smith. It sounds like Mary's having technical difficulties, so I can jump in for her.
Okay. Okay.
All right. This is the, um, item before you is the public hearing for the North Atomas Public Facilities Land Acquisition Fee Update. This fee is collected at building to permit to provide funding for the acquisition of public land in the North Atomas area. The North Atomas Finance Plan requires the fee is updated each year with an independent appraisal and then an averaging of the prior three appraisals for the prior three years. This year, the public land acquisition value has increased by 37.25% from 231,499 per acre to $317,741 per acre. This increase is mostly attributed to higher residential land values in North Atomas. And as such, we are proposing that the fee be increased to adjust for that, which would be effective July 1st, 2022. Our recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution increasing the public facilities land acquisition fee for North Atomas.
Okay. Thank you very much for substituting so ably there. Appreciate it. Is there any public testimony? All right, let's, let's get, let's get a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to open and close the public hearing and move staff recommendation. Mayor Jennings will second.
Okay, very good. Please call the role, Lynn.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby is absent. Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. That measure passes. Now we go to item 19, which is our lead item for the evening, the climate update, quarterly climate update. Jennifer Venema, welcome to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and to our council members. Jennifer Venema, I am our Climate Action Lead in the Office of Climate Action and Sustainability. We have a few slides to provide a brief quarterly update to you all today on what we've been up to. It's been about a year and a half since city council elevated urgency on our climate action efforts. And so today, we're here with our standing quarterly update on progress. Tonight, this is a discussion item with no recommended action, but it advances our commitment to transparency and accountability. But very briefly, before we start, just a quick shout out to the nearly 300 volunteers that came out for our Earth Day cleanup on Saturday. A big thank you, especially to the Smiths, who you can see here. Thank you, Mayor and council, for promoting and supporting the cleanup and to all of our departments that made it possible. Departments of Utilities, Public Works, Yipsey, with the support of the community engagement team. And we're just so pleased for these concrete success opportunities. As it relates more directly to our climate work, we're here just two months since our last report on February 8th to the city council when Public Works led the Climate and Transportation Workshop. Since then, we've continued to advance the work. Although we haven't had many updates publicly since that last workshop, we've been very busy. A few milestones include, first, all of the work for electrification, community. Community Development has convened a technical panel to advise on infeasibility for the new building electrification ordinance. Plus, we're preparing to launch outreach for the existing building strategy next month. Secondly, as directed by council last summer, the work is underway to look at onsite water reuse opportunities. Utilities and Community Development are evaluating cost benefits and preparing to bring an update back to the Law and Legislation Committee. Plus, our partnership with workforce leaders continues. We are evaluating green job opportunities and really sinking those job opportunities to climate priorities, working with the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. These milestones and more are listed in attachment three of your staff report. Furthermore, importantly, the team has been refining the administrative draft of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, or the CAP as we call it. Although we've been delayed releasing the document, we are now working towards public release in the summer. As a reminder, the CAP is our long-term strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and it functions as part of the general plan to operationalize our work for climate. We have had challenges keeping this project on schedule. But importantly, this is not due to changes in the approach that we last discussed late last year. But this is a big effort. It's part of the general plan update. And we have had some capacity challenges, but really what we want to acknowledge is that part of the delays because we're also busy implementing, as you can see in the staff report, work like electrification and workforce partnerships. So even though the CAP is not yet public or adopted, we are already advancing the priorities and preparing for more investment, as we've been discussing with city council. We also know that delays are at odds with the urgency that's needed for climate, as most recently reiterated and elevated in the latest report by the IPCC, just published this month. And in this report, there are a lot of red flags reporting that average emissions, greenhouse gases are at their highest levels ever, and that immediate action is needed. But there is a ray of hope in this report because it reiterates the importance of cities and urban areas in leadership and the opportunities to really change our business as usual trajectory. So acknowledging all of this, a simple but key step is the updated schedule we've included tonight in attachment two. The schedule shows all of the city efforts that are underway for climate. And this is intended to serve really as our climate agenda for the year, showing key milestones and all of those opportunities for public, public input and ongoing council involvement. We will maintain the schedule on our website. Even though the dates may shift, the intent is accountability. And as shown here and in more detail of the staff report, some of the upcoming milestones include a near-term upcoming report to the Law and Legislation Committee. We are also preparing for the second climate workshop requested by city council to discuss options to accelerate greenhouse gas emissions. And we're working to report back with more detail on transportation funding options. So again, to reiterate, the release of the Climate Action Plan document is real. We're working towards getting it public as soon as possible, but in the meantime, we are continuing to maintain progress on work like electrification and importantly, on transportation, the main focus of our workshop in February. The staff report tonight presents the estimated planning level costs for the big seven projects that we discussed with city council on February 8th. Now, Public Works is using some available funding to support the initial planning of these projects in preparation for upcoming grant cycles, as shown in the table here. We've also secured some supportive funding, like the recent Caltrans award to the city for fifteen minute neighborhood planning and working to advocate for more funding to our state and federal legislators. So we are doing the planning work necessary to prepare for implementation funding. But importantly, vastly more funding would be needed to fully implement the project. We're estimating the total costs just of these seven projects, not of the whole Climate Action Plan, at approximately two hundred and twelve million. While there are grants that can support this, we estimate that we would need to cover seventy five to eighty five million dollars to secure grant funding for the project you see here. This represents just the best estimate, about thirty to forty percent of the cost. So what we know is that more local funding is necessary because it's more than we have. Longer term, staff has identified some potential funding mechanisms. However, these will take more time to evaluate. Examples used by other communities include a range of tax and fee measures, things like taxes related to transportation network companies, for example. But these relate to other city needs as well, and we will need council direction on what to pursue. And there's a regional transportation sales tax measure currently underway that may further determine options for climate. The Public Works team is conducting more analysis on available mechanisms, and we will report back to the council in conjunction with council's request for more information on a possible central city EISB. So that information will come back to the council for transportation in summer or fall of this year. And just to conclude that discussion of the transportation issues, staff continues to evaluate these. But to advance the seven projects, we want to emphasize that first, the estimates we're presenting today are still planning level estimates. More work is needed and more grants will be needed to complete the design and to be ready for funding. Secondly, in order to secure grants, we are going to need much higher levels of success than we've achieved historically. We also know, as discussed in February, that strong regional support is needed from partners like CACOG, STA and RT. But importantly, we want to acknowledge here that if the city is to do more and move faster, the city would also need to receive higher funding amounts locally, including from regional funding rounds, where our allocations would also need to be awarded faster, without years of delay between award notice and availability of the funding, as is often the case, if we are to move faster, as council has asked us to explore, explore. And lastly, we also need, again, those new local sources of funding for transportation because we do not have the clear strategy to fund the gap that we've presented in the staff report. Again, we're working on more detail, and we will come back to the council in the summer or the fall. And with that, I want to thank you for your attention. I'm here tonight with staff from the Departments of Public Works, Community Development and others to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. We have a, I know I have a number of questions and comments, and I see other members are up as well. Why, why don't we begin with the public testimony?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three hands raised. The first is Rosie Yocub.
Yeah, hi. I am, um, a member of 350 Sacramento from District Five. Um, I'm, I'm actually disappointed at the delay in the CAP. Remember that all of the stuff that we're doing for climate change is time bound. What I believe is that this indicates that there is more staff support needed to get this work done in a timely fashion, and that needs to happen either by allocating more time to do this work from existing staff throughout the depart, throughout the city's various departments or hiring new staff. Um, as Jennifer just pointed out, the city needs to find that funding, that local funding, that seventy five to eighty five million dollars identify that will ident, get the matching funds for transportation. Um, we, we need to also get funds to help with the other policies that, that the city wants, like supporting the EJ community, funding an existing building electrification pilot, achieving baseline canopy closure of twenty five percent by 2030, which we met, which was, you know, alluded to in the arbitrary presentation. We can't let opportunities to secure funding get away from us because we don't invest at a local level. The city's budget needs to be updated to include more for climate. The good news is that these investments are, will have health and safety benefits beyond just the reduction of GHDs, and, and we should consider that when we're considering how, how much, how much we spend. Um, I, you know, I know we usually have a, a short time limit. I'm giving the balance of time to just consider for ourselves. Um, I wanna, I wanted to honor, uh, when Bruce's intent to call attention to what we need to do.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah. Oh, I think I just did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kate Wilkins.
Hello, my name is Kate Wilkins. I'm a resident in District Seven and a volunteer at 350 Sacramento. Um, council, I first started calling into public meetings for the mayor's climate commission. Uh, since then, I worked to rally volunteers to call in whenever climate is on the agenda, whenever we can get to it, whenever our volunteers have bandwidth. You have all said very supportive things about climate action. Many of you on the council today were here when you said yes to the climate emergency declaration in 2019. I sit here now, and I try to reconcile these public displays of support with the information in this climate update, which reads to me pretty much like a list of future planned meetings, many of which will likely be delayed, given the lack of staffing resources that's provided at the city. Your few staff working on climate can only do so much. I know they're doing the best they can. Jennifer and Leila are doing a wonderful job. This council was so supportive of the active transportation projects described in February, and what has happened since then? I know, as Jennifer described, there's internal planning going on, yes, but the city has no plans to allocate any funds or take action this year. There are no plans on how we will allocate the local need for these projects. The proposed budget that was released yesterday was kind of an extra slap in the face. The goals for climate action don't go very far past releasing the CAP, which is already delayed over a year, and exploring funding for transportation. These are our goals for 2022 to 2023. Please explain to us why there's only six hundred and thirty thousand dollars advocated for climate action next year. In addition to answering this question, I urge you to put aside funds for the active transportation projects and hire more climate staff to support these priorities. We need to put money towards this. Every dollar spent now saves more money later. And if we aren't going to do that, let's not call City of Sacramento leader on climate or try to get us to celebrate small performative victories. We're done on, we're done with that on that level. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Nancy Hugid.
Thank you. Actually, this is Rick Codina. I'd like to thank Jennifer and Leila for their work and, and, but like the many other common commenters tonight, I am concerned about the delay of the CAP and also the lack of funding and the lack of commitment for additional funding for particularly the active transportation projects. Uh, by background, I was on the Built Environment Task Force of the mayor's climate commission back when. And so I look forward to addressing the electrification actions that we recommended for existing buildings. Uh, this will be a thorny problem, but I believe city staff and the council should be up to the task. But we need to be thinking right now about what we can do to prepare. And that means bolstering city staff, particularly in the permitting office. Right now, the majority of gas furnaces and water heaters evade permitting. Most people are SCOFLs and they're just not going to the permit office to get permits when they replace them. That means there's no city oversight and there, so there's no leverage to get them to switch to electric heat pumps. So, uh, we need right now to put in money to bolster the staffing in the permit office so we can get better permit compliance. We have to be ready for when we have the ordinance in place or we have the recommendations in place to go after these gas burning, carbon spewing, uh, equipment in all of our buildings. And it's one of the many ways, but a very important way that we're going to get our building greenhouse gas production done. So I thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Hey, all very important testimony. Well, let's, let's hear from some of my colleagues. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, this is perhaps the most important conversation that we can have. You know, the seven big ideas, as presented certainly in this accounting, are rather expensive. And I've talked to public works staff about those figures because they've gone up over time. But, uh, you know, the big message here is that climate change is very real. It is upon us, and it is getting increasingly more urgent. I don't know how many of you, my colleagues, read the IPCC report, but I do. And, uh, you know, it's enough to make you lose sleep. This is not something that we can take lightly. You know, I, at mid-year, I asked for funding to pull down matching grant money for the seven big ideas. Uh, it was not forthcoming. The new budget doesn't have any wiggle room to fund any of these climate-related projects, which I find to be very troubling. You know, we talked a lot about youth spending, and that's always a good idea. But for my money, the best money we could spend on youth is by preserving a planet for them to grow up in that is safe and sane and, uh, is functional. We're doing a lot of work in the water world about climate change. We're doing a lot of work in air, the air district about climate change. But the city council really hasn't taken substantial action outside of the electrification ordinance, which, which is a good thing, a very good thing, but it costs us nothing to do. We just had to pass an ordinance. I, you know, I personally feel that this council could flex its muscle and show a lot more support for climate action plans. Um, you know, implementation of the projects that our staff work real hard to bring to us, but we perpetually are not funding. It's, for me, it's a big problem. This is, uh, you know, the fact of the matter is, I agree with the environmental community. We're on a crash course with disaster. It does affect Sacramento. It affects the whole world. It will manifest in not very many years in sea level rise around the Bay Area. And then we will know exactly what climate change is all about. Uh, you know, I mean, it sounds portentous of doom, but we do have decisions that we can make here locally as a council to do our part and to be leaders. You know, Mayor, I laud your, your, your climate commission. It was great exercise and a lot of great recommendations came out of it, but now it's up to us to implement. It really is. Jennifer Donlin, why are you on the line?
I am Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. You know, so just so you know, I spoke to Jennifer earlier about the cost of the seven big ideas. And in the, in that conversation, it came up that those were kind of high-level estimates of what it would take to get those projects built. And of course, it's going to take a lot of local money to pull down the grant money that we're going to be chasing. But when I asked Jennifer about what are the projects, you know, if just even active transportation projects are so extraordinarily expensive, two, two hundred and twelve million dollars, right? We don't have that kind of cash in our back pocket. And even the matching funds, seventy plus million dollars, the matching funds pulled down the grants, we don't have that either. Uh, where do we get the biggest bang for our buck? Can, can you name like two projects, and they're probably transportation-related because transportation is where most of our greenhouse gas emissions are emanating from? What are the two biggest projects that you think we could focus on as a region to make an impact on climate change?
Well, Councilmember Harris, thank you for asking my thoughts and opinions on this. It's always good to see you in council. I think for climate change, the biggest thing is getting folks walking and biking on active transportation and investing in transit, which is why, for example, the Truxell Bridge, the crossing across the American River is one of our priority projects that we recently won a grant for to do the next phase of feasibility.
And like, uh, what about the Stockton Project? So that was one of the seven big ideas and also a hundred and twelve million or a hundred and two million dollars to implement. You know, where does that fit in the scheme of things?
I, I think that the Stockton Boulevard project of transit projects, the Stockton Boulevard bus lanes that we talked about in February and the Truxell Bridge are some of the biggest efforts that we can have around transit. We need to expand transit, not only in its service area, serving South Atomas and North Atomas, but we need to improve, um, its efficiency so that it's predictable, so that it's more, more folks feel more comfortable using it. So they know they get on stop A, and they'll get to stop C at the same time every time.
Well, I, I agree with you. And ever since I got elected, and you know, I was quickly placed on RT, and the Truxell Bridge has been the subject of discussion for all of the seven and a half years I've sat on this council. And yet, there's been not a tremendous amount of forward movement. Of course, again, a bridge is a tough project to. Of course, again, a bridge is a tough project to effect. Takes a lot of money, takes a lot of environmental clearance, and it takes a lot of community outreach because we know that there's opposition to it. But the fact of the matter is, for our transit system to be really embraced by the population, don't you think that getting across to Natomas, which is the fifth of our population and then on to the airport, would actually be the thing that finally makes RT more of a fully functional tra- transit district?
Councilmember Harris, I think that that, um, getting the Truxell Bridge absolutely is necessary for the city to meet its climate goals, for us to serve over 25% of our residents and connect to the airport. Uh, I think that this transit line is essential for us to meeting our goals, absolutely.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer, you do a lot of tremendous work for us, as does the entire Public Works staff. And I'm really appreciative of Jennifer Venema in many ways. I know how hard she works. And, um, you know, she's been very helpful to me to help me move goals forward like airplane electrification and really kind of esoteric projects that actually will make a big difference and might even bring employment locally. You, you know, Mayor, I'm just about done. I just want to say this, that climate change, in my opinion, is something that I feel that our council could focus more heavily on. I think we all need to push our shoulders against, uh, the big projects like the Stockton BRT and, and bike lanes and like the Truxell Bridge. These are the things that are going to help us reach our goal by 2045. And there's been talk on this council of moving that up to 2030. That's not within reach, not without a huge expenditure of money. But whenever it comes up, you know, at the state or federal level, we have to be unified and try to get an RT bridge across the American River. It's going to be essential if we're ever going to meet our climate goals. And, you know, I'd just like to say to Councilmember Garrett, I totally stand with you on trying to promote a better transportation corridor along Stockton. It will have tremendous benefits climate-wise. Uh, that's about all I've got to say, Mayor. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Mayor Portengueira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one quick second. There we go. Well, thank you. Uh, let me go again and say, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the staff's work on this, particularly on the, uh, uh, Stockton Boulevard corridor. It, uh, again, and I think the Stockton Boulevard corridor is our, our guinea pig here for what we could do for, uh, you know, Franklin or De Paso, for Macroflor, and a lot of our old commercial corridors that were built as highways, but, uh, now are in the middle of, of residential communities. And I think being able to look at our climate action plan so that we can improve our air quality and transportation options is important. So I want to thank the staff for that on that aspect. Uh, the only thing that I wanted to add here is, uh, when I heard you, uh, when I heard Jennifer Venema, uh, you know, discuss the EIFD for downtown, um, I, I, this is again, you know, I've, I've asked for an EIFD for the Sacramento Center for Innovation, which is on the Ramona property where the Future Mobility, California Mobility Center, uh, is going to transfer to from their current location at, uh, uh, at Depot Park. And, you know, uh, we were moving forward on the EIFD on Stockton Boulevard. But I, in these presentations, I always hear downtown EIFD, downtown EIFD. We've been discussing trying to get an EIFD at Ramona since 2016. And so I, if I don't hear it, then I shouldn't expect to see it. So I want to just make sure that when we're looking at creating an EIFD, um, not only for the downtown area, we should be looking at other areas of opportunity where we have, uh, co-mutual goals of economic development and also achieving our, uh, our aspirational goals of air, uh, air quality improvements and, uh, and greenhouse gas emission reduction. And what better way than supporting the manufacturing of zero emission products, becoming, creating an export solution? So, uh, again, I think I want to make sure that I highlight that point. Uh, during the Climate Action Plan, uh, when that first came to council, um, I stressed point number six, I think it was, making sure that economic development, job opportunities were all part of our, of our, our strategy here. It cannot just be one-sided. We have to look at how we're putting, uh, looking, positioning ourselves both for workforce opportunities and also for the, uh, the opportunity for us to be the exporter of these goods. So with that, I'll just say, great work, a lot of work. And as, as you saw here today, uh, you know, a lot of need, uh, for a big challenge ahead. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Garrett, Councilmember Luloy. You're on mute.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, first and foremost, Jennifer Venema, thank you so much, uh, to you, your team. Of course, Public Works right there as well for, um, such, um, great information, um, somewhat depressing, but yet good information. So thank you so much. Uh, my question is more coming down to our, at city level. So I understand global warming is a big thing. It's, it's a, it's a global thing. But I'm, I'm more concerned about our city and especially certain communities. If I'm not mistaken, within the city of Sacramento, we have certain districts or part of certain districts that have, um, that their air quality is not at the same level of other parts of the city. Does your office communicate with the, the rest of the, the, the city staff as far as what needs to take place in these areas that the air quality is bad already? That whether it is building more higher density and what positions should we take to make sure that, you know, in areas like my district that we have such a high percentage of asthma, that how are those going to be, um, looked at? And how can we kind of coordinate that so 10 years from now, we don't come back and say, oops? You know, if we would have seen this 10 years ago, we would have been ahead of this. So that's a little bit of, uh, my concern right now, um, especially with this notion that we get from our, um, state at state level that they're promoting built, built, built. So bring more people in. And I'm looking in areas like my district where more building means more harm to the current residents of that district. So I, I'd just like to hear some information on that. And is there anything we can do today to protect these communities, especially the youth, from a potential risk of asthma and other, um, uh, issues, um, down the road? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Luloy. The answer is yes. Our Office of Climate Action does work very closely with our city departments to coordinate planning and project efforts. As part of the general plan update that community development is leading, they're advancing development of our first environmental justice element, which will be chapter of our general plan. And that will be coming forward later this year with more detail on how the city can go further to address many of the issues you've outlined. Also, in the near term, we want to commend the council last year for the mid-year budget in 2021. Council allocated $500,000 to an air quality monitoring partnership with the air district. And we're working with the air district for that program to launch. Right now, they're bringing on community-based partners. They're working to prepare a solicitation to really do outreach and focus on more near-term educational efforts. Also, local groups such as United Latinas has been pursuing grant funding to get the word out more broadly. And the city is a supporter of efforts like these and trying to identify where we can bring more funding for education, even as we advance longer-term strategies for the built environment.
Thank you. So, um, just to expand on that, I, I know that we have a, a, a city general plan that's coming up. But from this point till that general planning gets, um, implemented, what are communities like District Two, what are they supposed to do? Because are we just going to move, uh, forward as everything is today until the general plan gets, um, you know, gets introduced? So I'm, I'm, I'm just worried about from now till when the, the, the city general plan is getting put into action.
Yes. Just a brief answer from me, and I'll invite if any of our community development team or Matt Hurdle would like to chime in here for more. Um, we do have a, a number of efforts underway. So for example, as I said, working to get our information for air quality efforts and strategies individuals can take. We're also taking off outreach for electrification and would really love to come to District Two and make sure we're hitting all of those community groups, looking at how we can impact indoor air quality, which in some cases can be more hazardous than outdoor air quality that we breathe. Um, and of course, council's investments in things like home rehab improvements are also underway. So I'll pause there in case any of my colleagues from community development would like to add any other thoughts.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. And I would certainly like to echo Jennifer's comments about actions that can be taken immediately or in the short term. Uh, you know, we talked about trees at the beginning of the meeting, so efforts to increase tree planting can have huge benefits for air quality and, uh, reducing energy consumption in buildings. They let the vehicle electrification and, and distribution of EV charging units and efforts to promote electric vehicle use, uh, and working with RT on, uh, their deployment of electric vehicles in their bus fleet. All of these things are things that can be done, uh, in the near term. Meanwhile, uh, we do abide by the existing land use, uh, framework that council has adopted until council changes it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Luloy, are you done?
Well, yes, I know, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess my, my little bit of a frustration slash confusion is as we're, we're working and we're establishing these guidelines for that major victory, in the interim part, we're taking communities that already don't have that hot, great air quality. And we are saying, you know, um, let's make it more densified. So, you know, is that helping those communities with, especially with the youth and future illnesses? Um, I want to know, are we looking at these or, um, as, as, and I had this conversation with Tom and I agree, and, and I appreciate Tom's, Tom's comment tonight. Or are we bound by a set of guidelines, um, as far as what buildings can come in? And as long as we put a check mark on those boxes, we're fine. So I guess that, that's where my mixed feeling is, that we're spending all the money for the future, but yet in an interim, some of our decisions is actually causing health issues for our youth, uh, in certain areas. And, um, it's making certain communities' air quality much dirtier and then, uh, some, uh, some others. So are we gonna, I think there has to be a, a direct communication, um, between some of these, um, offices so we make sure we don't overdo some of the things that we're doing that's going to hurt our community or the air quality of that community? So, uh, no, I mean, I'm hearing, uh, the, the staff, but I don't see a solution. No one has recommended a solution yet.
We, what, what we heard tonight, and I'm going to comment on it a minute, is that we have a major funding gap if we're going to be more serious about, um, meeting our climate change imperative here, um, and that we're going to have to come to grips with that and find a way to reduce that gap and fill that gap. So I think-
But meanwhile, should we promote, uh, more vehicles that burn, uh, fuel to move into certain communities that already are surrounded by freeways and have a really bad air quality? Or should we be a little bit more sensitive on how much we want to push density in certain communities?
Well, that density along light rail lines is certainly, um, uh, uh, I think a good public policy because it encourages more people to use the, the public transportation system, as Jennifer Donald Wyatt alluded to earlier. So it's not, you know, uh, building more housing in more density actually, it gives us a greater potential to reduce vehicle miles traveled if it's done in the right way. That's a whole nother subject.
Absolutely. But the RT line goes only so much and it covers a certain part of the neighborhood. It's the other side that when you build it out, everybody's going to have a car, everybody's going to start their car every morning. So, you know, what, what should we do to protect our residents meanwhile? I guess that's, that, that's the question. And I don't expect an answer right now, but, um, it's been something that my constituents have been asking me and I just wanted to put it on the table.
Under, understand. Good, good comments. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alenzuela?
Yes, um, thank you, Jennifer and the whole team for this update. I want to echo what a lot of the commenters and my colleagues said about moving mountains among a small team and, um, really though also echo the call for, um, support. I, you know, want to talk a little bit about, you know, action without direction. Um, and, and I think when we pursue a very siloed approach, it's going to be infinitely more expensive than when we're looking for synergy. You know, a great example is the youth bus passes that Councilmember Chenier has promoted. That's something that helps youth and it helps economic development and it helps increase bus ridership, which helps make transit, uh, more, more attainable for, for people. And it helps teach a whole generation of folks how not to get in their car, um, which is as much a behavioral change as it is an environmental and an access challenge, um, as was noted by my colleagues before me. So I think when we think about electrification, for instance, you know, part of what I think gets missed is sometimes in your update that I want my colleagues to understand is that, you know, we're looking at how do we achieve those economic impacts by putting in water efficiency standards? So the plumbers and pipe fitters still have jobs while also addressing the equity impact by looking at existing buildings. Because new building strategies without existing buildings means we're leaving whole communities behind who need to access those new technologies. So we're trying to, to bring these things together in small ways. And I think the cap and relatedly, the environmental justice element in the general plan are such important opportunities for us to really have a very thoughtful discussion. And so while I am sad that it's been delayed because I want to, I want to have the direction now, at the same time, I think what you're getting ready to bring forward with a zero emission scenario, um, in 2030 to really push us to have that conversation about strategy, not just what projects do we like the best, but like where do we strategically move and how do we prioritize these steps so that we're moving as quickly as possible and prioritizing equity, um, as Councilmember Luloy was just pointing to, these neighborhoods that need these air quality benefits as quickly as possible so that we can also, we can do multiple things at one time. But I think this is the real challenge and what I'm looking forward to in the Climate Action Plan. And so I will also speak it, um, as my colleague Councilmember Garrett said, so that we have it out in the, in the universe here. As I know, we've talked about Jennifer before, is how critical I think that document happening when the general plan is happening and just the momentous conversation that we're getting ready to have. And, and how I want us to try our best to break out of this idea of it has to be either or, we have to rank prioritize because the real path forward, the most expeditious path forward is going to be one that's intersectional and one that really looks at how do we help the youth and the EJ communities and the air quality and the jobs as quickly as possible so that it's sustained and that it actually makes the, the big impact that we're hoping it, it will make. So I have really enjoyed working with you on the electrification policies and I'm really, really looking forward to that conversation because I think that model that you all are doing, I think it's the first time we've ever done that as a city to say, what would it take to get to zero essentially? Which is a really big question and, and I'm really hopeful for that discussion to show us some options and a path forward that can really let us stop, kind of move beyond this project list notion. Although there's a certain part of implementation that requires project lists. So I recognize that, you know, that, that's necessary at some point. I don't think we're there yet. I think we're at the point where we need to really be looking at all of this data and information in a totally new way. And, and so I'm, I know that was a broad statement and overarching statement and you and I have talked about that quite a bit. But I, I just, I guess I'm just saying this for my colleagues and for the public that I recognize the frustration you're feeling on urgency and, and I, and I feel that. Um, you know, I work in my part-time role helping groups in Kern County where I'm from on oil and gas legislation. So my goodness, do I feel that because we are not moving fast enough and there's so much work that needs to be done and that should have been done years ago. But at the same time, action without direction is, is not helpful. And just looking for projects, um, isn't going to help us. And we need a foundational shift in how we do this. Like, how are we ever going to- And we need a foundational shift in how we do this. Like, how are we ever gonna create a market, for example, in Meadowview? That's dense enough to support a grocery store being there long-term. What does that look like? Because that to me is sustainable community development means that Meadowview has a grocery store that lasts, that Del Paso Heights has transit that's sustainable, that serves everybody. And, and those systems, that systems approach is, is a very different perspective than just looking at projects that reduce GHG. And that's really looking for strategy and investment opportunities and synergy. That's hard to name without a more comprehensive look. So um, I guess I'll get off my soapbox and stop talking about that, but um, just wanted to put that out there as a framework for us. I think the work you're doing, it is sad. It's hard to see it get delayed, but it's also, I think we're in a really, really critical year right now with the general plan update. And, and I just, I don't want us to rush it. I think it's, it's hard to keep that sense of urgency without rushing it. So I just want to appreciate what you're doing and, and reiterate also the call from the callers and my colleagues that, you know, our founding, our funding is our values. And so I think eventually we are gonna have to really talk about what funding mechanisms we use to accelerate this forward. And um, and that's a conversation I'm really looking forward to having once we have that path identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. A couple of comments and suggestions myself. So we have a really great and hardworking staff in this area. We really do. I mean, you know, the Jennifers, their teams, um, it, it's a great staff and they really are dedicated and thank you. And at the same time, it's not inconsistent to say that the community frustration in my view is warranted. Um, and here is the dilemma in the city. I'm gonna let everyone peek behind the curtain for a moment, because this is what goes on um, every day in our city. And this is not an excuse, but this is the, the dilemma. The city is a municipal corporation that has had traditional roles. And its traditional roles have been to invest in traditional public safety and basic services. And of course, you can't do other things if you don't do that well. And we do do that well. And that uh, is important. But what's really at issue in our city now is that the public is rightfully demanding that our city and our city government change and expand what it considers to be its core priorities. Been saying this now for months, if not years. It's been kind of the theme of my own mayorship here. Whether it's affordable housing and homelessness, whether it's deeper investments in youth, uh, whether it is climate, the public is saying cities should do more. And the pushback has been from um, those who have been around the city for a long time is, well, wait a minute. Um, the city cannot be the only one that is leaning in and investing heavily in these quote, new areas, even though they are absolutely appropriate and necessary for a city to take on. So what is the answer here when a budget is presented yesterday that shows, you know, um, uh, based on revenue projections, there is not a lot of new money. What do we do? Part of the answer, I think, is to be very conscious of what, I don't know which member referred to this, but the siloing of um, the way we operate city government. For example, Public Works is a great department and Ryan Moore and Hector Barone are terrific leaders and they're really into this. But I would just ask rhetorically, why isn't the climate function combined with economic development in a more substantial way? Because um, the city manager is working really closely with me after my state of the city address, um, excuse me, state of the downtown address around this notion of an EIFD. And I said in my speech that, you know, an EIFD could be not just for infra, basic infrastructure, but it could be the local match for the green, uh, for the, for a, a number of the initiatives that Jennifer Venema laid out here uh, today and that we've been talking about for months. And, and yet if climate is sort of separate from economic development, where is that synergy to drive the EIFD study in a way that begins to imagine and think about how those proceeds could in part be used to help fund a more robust climate initiative? Because we're not backing up our commitment and it's a real stated commitment with real resources. And yes, a couple person unit is not enough here as good as uh, as good as Jennifer and her team and her team are. And so I would like, the one thing that I would like to come out of this is that climate be seen as more of an economic development initiative. The mobility center is a perfect example and Eric Gara is correct. You know, whether an EIFD is appropriate for Ramona or not, I suspect that it may be just as it wasn't one moment for Aggie Square and then all of a sudden it became the main source of our, of our local contribution. That I'd like us to be driving these things uh, much more forcefully. And I know that our, our, our consultant report um, done in relatively short order will help us answer these questions, but I would like to see a merging of these agendas. And then on the, on this year's budget, I've seen it and we went over it today. And I know that um, we uh, are spending a lot of money on homelessness. And you know, the city manager says to me all the time and, you know, about not only me, but the city council. How many new priorities can the city and the city council have, right? We're juggling a lot. My answer is that, well, great cities and growing cities have to find a way to be as creative as possible to initiate as much as we can. And so I'd like us, for example, to look at our current CIP, our current public works budget. Just look at it. We haven't even asked the question yet and, 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 and ask ourselves whether there's anything we're currently doing that could be deferred or put behind some of these urgent climate action. The seven big projects are not the end of the work, you know, the be all and the end all. But if we were to accomplish them, and by the way, seventy-five million dollars over the course of, say, five to seven years, one-time money, by the way, it's not ongoing money. Between EIFD, some repurposing, can't we find a way to at least get started? More aggressively on, on trying to fulfill that uh, tho- those sets of ideas that have been put forward. Um, on the climate action plan, I understand on the one hand, the reason for delay, but I also fear the signal that it sends. Is, is it possible that we can get updated every month and we can be really pushing towards as early a completion of that project even by summer as possible, even if it predates the general plan review? Because I think intent, what, what we're hearing from the, what, what we're hearing from the community is not that we're not performing well, but that we're not making this enough of a priority. And yes, we have to be creative around the resource question. But I would like us to do everything we can to lean in more to show the community that the climate commission, that the, the, the untold hours of work that Jennifer Venema and her team have done, that we're actually doing everything we can to try to bring some life to this. And so EI, you know, what does merge more with economic development? The EIFD thing is crucial because that could be a, a, a source of one-time funding for a number of our initiatives and the local match. Looking, just having a discussion again about what could be repurposed just as the uh, city manager and the finance team did so creatively and appropriately to fund the thirty-three million dollar gap on our homeless initiatives. That was a really great piece of work. So yes, we can. Um, yes, we can. And let's, we, we want to elevate this discussion and see how far we can go um, and, and show some, and show some more progress. City manager?
Mayor, uh, this item is not up for um, um, action tonight, but what we can do, well, let me first say that if climate is a priority or the priority, we will certainly make it so. Uh, what I think, what I would suggest is that we will bring back an action item. They can take a look at scrubbing all of our CIPs, including current projects to prioritize these big seven. But please understand that that means the various projects that come to the council every week that are priorities in the various districts will be put on the back burner. So I just, I just want to be clear because it is sounding as though our team is not prioritizing this, but really
It's always taken, it's not a criticism. It, it is not a criticism. Just all, all I'm saying is that it is appropriate to pose, is to pose the choices, just as you described. And if the city council and the, we're the ones responsible, and if the city council um, uh, wants to transparently and consciously say, we want to fund these bike project, these bike weight projects, these green projects ahead of something else, just, just set up the conversation for us so that, so that we can have that. And frankly, so that the community can engage in that conversation as well, because we hear things in siloed form, correct? And, and that's all, that, that's all that this, the passion from the, the, the the community and councilmember Harrison, all of us, right? About, oh God, climate is the existential imperative. Are we doing enough? Is to just pose those questions so that together we can make, we can make those choices.
I, I do want to be helpful and provide those options. And that's what I'm suggesting is that we do bring something back to have a conversation about what it could take to look at these, you know, seventy-five or eighty million dollars in, in match funding to prioritize this. All I'm suggesting is that there are many other priorities that come before this council too. And that we want, we want to make sure that you have all the options.
No, we just want options. But I want to say one other thing that might be a sore spot here, because it's important that we get it out. And this is the, the issue of bonding, which I know is going to come on, which I know is gonna come before the city council in, in very, in various forms over the next couple of months. Councilmember Chenier um, has been very out there um, on the issue of uh, housing and a housing bond. And, and so I understand completely the downside of, of bonding. You're deadening yourself as a city for thirty years for one-time investments. Completely get it. But then you ask your, then you, then you look at the other side and say, well, that's how we traditionally have invested in infrastructure over time. It is the only way to fund big projects. It's why we have a brand new convention center. It's why we have a new community center theater. It's why we have community centers and so many community facilities. And so is a mobility center and that economic driver important enough to, to think about financing it? Either through an EIFD or a bond, are these projects important enough i- in terms of our contribution to climate? To consider a financing in, in a creative way, is affordable housing, as we're gonna talk about in a number of weeks, important enough that it's worth the five million dollars or so of debt service, depending on, uh, on how you do it a year? Because while there are downsides to this, there are also losses in not investing in our economic future, in equity, in climate. And I think that's what we, that's what this city is grappling with. And by the way, I think it's not, I think it's a healthy debate. Because we are, we are arguing as friends, all with, all with love for our city um, about what should be the priorities of our city. That's all it is. It's not a criticism of performance. It, it's really that argument and it's a good one. And, you know, reasonable people can, can, can be on either side of that argument. But god darn it, the people are saying, we want more for our city. How do we pay for it? Jeff Harris said we should spend more money on climate here tonight. I mean, there you go.
I, I, I think the answer to many of those questions is yes. It's worthy of a discussion. I just think that the timing of it is what uh, what, what we're challenged with is that when we look at a hundred six, hundred and sixty million dollar deficit over the next four years projected, uh, I, I could not in good conscience make that recommendation.
I'm not, I'm asking you to present choices. That's all.
Yeah, no. Thank you.
Councilman Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I, I just want to weigh in a, a little bit. I, I think that um, I, I, I totally agree with you and, and councilmember Valenzuela here. This is, it shouldn't be a zero sum game. And it shouldn't be if we're investing in one set of activities, we're not investing in another. And when you look at our budget, you know, obviously we have uh, traditional public safety, which far outweighs everything else combined uh, by, by hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, but what we, what we need to do is, is look for those places where we can knock the silos down. I mean, obviously, um, I have been supporting more funding for youth. Um, but if we do that in workforce development and if we can bring in other partners, and I know, Mayor, you've talked about this as well. But if we can bring in other partners like the school district and look at career pathways, um, we, we need to think not only about this year and next year, we need to think about the next decade or the next multiple decades. Um, and, and where we want to go as a city and what we want to look like as a city. And those are the investments that we should make. Um, and thinking not about one-offs um, because they sound good today, but thinking about in longer-term investments. I think that's what we try to do with our own families and that's what we try to teach our young people. Um, it's something that we can really employ here and also bringing in other voices. Um, whether it's, it's other governmental agencies or the private sector, the business community here, the nonprofit community. Um, and helping them to understand, you know, all of these things take resources. Um, but how we do it uh, is important. And, and, and the city manager and I had this discussion. I don't believe we have different priorities from the city manager and his staff. Uh, we have different strategies sometimes of how to get there. But if we all can agree on the, on the outcomes that we want, on the results that we want, on the metrics to measure that, I think we'll have a much better chance both of getting more resources from our community and from the state and federal government. Um, and, and being successful as we go forward. My two cents.
Good two cents. Okay. Um, all right, there is no action tonight. Uh, Jennifer Venema, do you wanna wrap this all up for us?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We've got our work ahead of us and team will regroup here at the city and strategize on coming back to have those discussions. Really appreciate all of your feedback and support. Thanks to each of you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Could I ask Jennifer for kind of another round of briefings with certainly myself, any other council members? So we want to be part of that solution, I think. Um, we know our districts as well as anybody and, and have something to offer in that sense earlier in the conversation than later.
If you could add, add me to that list as well, I greatly appreciate it. I was thinking about you, Sean.
We will reach out to all the offices. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, members, that concludes the agenda for this evening, uh, or this late afternoon. Um, are there, is there public testimony on items not on tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have four hands raised. The first is Matthew Winters.
Hello, Mayor and city council. Um, thank you uh, for your time. Uh, I am a resident of District Seven. Um, just kind of following up on the climate initiative um, action items. Uh, this is something that I care about greatly and have spoken to you in regards to the gasoline leaf blowers. I just want to highlight a study from the California Air Resources Board in regards to SOARS, the small off-road engines used within the state. They found, um, and I quote, that emissions from small off-road engines are higher than the emissions emitted from the fourteen point four million passenger cars operating on Cal, the California roadways. Um, so I think with climate, we, this is a holistic, we need to take a holistic approach. We can't um, ignore the, the major polluters that, that maybe um, are in, innocuous to us. Um, to me, leaf blowers, uh, they kick up dust as well as, you know, pollute and, and emit large amounts of fumes. They are currently very little regulation in regards to them. They, they use antiquated two-stroke style engines. Um, no passenger cars or even motorcycles are allowed to use that within the state. Um, personally, I have, you know, reached out to the code enforcement in regards to getting some of these regulations that are currently on the books enforced. Um, there have been zero citations issued in over four calendar years. I spoke to the code enforcement department. There were over six hundred complaints just last calendar year alone. This is something your community cares about. Um, I, I think that part of the funding thing, we can all Um, I, I think that part of the funding thing, we can also, you know, agree that, that if this was enforced, there, there is a potential source of revenue behind that. Uh, if they were enforced. If you don't want to pay a code enforcement officer, I would gladly volunteer if anybody wanted to deputize myself and I would go along, walk the streets with you or whoever um would support me in that. I know that's not going to happen. Um, but i- if there is some type of enforcement, I do think that could kind of kill two birds with one stone. Thank, thank you for your time, Sean.
Thank you for your comments. Next is a phone number, uh, four three six six.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis of To The Bay and Back Cheesecase. I wanted to give a few shouts out tonight. The first one is our, our, uh, someone told me that Vice Mayor uh was ill from COVID and I'm on the road and I wanted to send uh my prayers to her because she's been very supportive of us. And I wanted to make sure she knew that. The second thing is uh earlier I studied something that I have never seen. There was a city council meeting at ten AM. I, I've never seen a one that early and then when I saw what it was about, I had to tune in. Uh, there's some very shrewd uh cruel people at City Hall and I, I, I'm going to keep the light on it because I know what's really going on now. And the uh support that we have is now citywide now, Mayor and City Council. I mean, our cheesecakes are in every district and because we're known for delivering. Um, one of the millennial groups sent me something that I'm going to focus in on, not tonight, but for as long as I go after this. They sent me uh something on the city manager's office and it said divisions and programs. And it listed innovation of economical development, cannabis, youth development, diversity equity and uh media and communications. And I said, oh my goodness, this confirms what I'm talking about. You have a department that literally controls even the media of what's going on.
No, no.
It's, it, it says media and communications. I'm going to finish this, Mayor because the Sacramento Bee, which I send a shout out to very regularly, said that that department had difficulties getting monies to underserved communities.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I feel like my time was shortened, but I'll just.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, I'd like to read a little summary of your good work. In an effort to sidestep the Boise Court decision against cruel and unusual punishment, this is due to you all. A guy named Lawrence needs prayers. He was my camp leader at Fair Oaks in Howe. I moved him to the river. He called last night and told me he hadn't seen his friend, so he went over to his friend's tent. He opened up the tent and found his friend dead with maggots coming out of his face. He freaked out and when he was crossing the street, he got hit by a car and was taken to the hospital. He is okay, but has a serious leg injury. He has to wear a leg brace. Lawrence called last night because he said he couldn't get the image of his friend's face with maggots out of his head. He is traumatized. I just found out from another leader that another person from that same encampment has died as well. That's you. You did that. It is directly due to all of you and the city manager. That is due to your decision to try and subvert the Boise Court decision by finding a bullshit way to enable the Fair Oaks encampment to be cleared. I see you trying to expand what can be considered infrastructure so you can sweep people. I see you trying to rename violations to unpermitted rather than illegal as AB twenty-six thirty-three does, not your domain, but still. Renaming areas to be conservation areas to justify sweeps of encampments. It's gross. Anyone who promotes or allows such things to occur is tacitly responsible for every death. And I hope you receive what you deserve for engaging in these efforts to bypass the court ruling meant to avoid cruel and unusual punishment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Good evening uh to all. I would like to say thank you to council members LaLoli and Valenzuela for their com, excuse me, for their comments on Agenda Item Nineteen in highlighting and/or for some bringing information which may not have been known in regards to the health aspects in different districts such as uh council member LaLoli's District Two and uh down here in council member Myveng's uh council District Eight to where the registered asthma cases and other respiratory ailments are the top um areas in the city of Sacramento caused by air pollution. And in addition to not only just asthma, if you break down the, the federal uh studies in regards to P-two um um pollution, which is uh emission by car, car exhaust, so forth, so on. Uh, specifically in District Eight, the Metaview community registers, I believe, we're in the ninety-two percentile across the nation. Meaning there's only eight percent of the United States, it's air pollution worse than ours. With that said, as Councilman LaLoli pointed out, um, bringing high density into any area of Sacramento, of course, will bring more cars because this is California and this is the West. We don't ride mass transit as they do on the East Coast. One, because mass transit, public transit, uh, excuse me, isn't set up the way it is on the East Coast. Until that happens, people will be in their cars and until fossil uh cars are, until we get off of fossil fuels and into electric vehicles, the same kind of pollution just continues. I just wanted to again say thank you to the council members for bringing that up. Thank you.
For your comments. Next speaker is Cheryl Lane.
Oh yay, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Cheryl Lane. I'm founder and CEO of Atrium nine-one-six, a creative innovation center for sustainability. We support and accelerate local creatives to build creative solutions that drive us towards a sustainable future. We have two solutions for you on this climate change. I tried to talk earlier, but I, I think I got kicked off. Um, one, we have an atrium artist that is working with an Italian company that has a new technology in paint and actually purifies the air. Um, and we have a lot of data to support this and we're helping her become the uh West Coast distributor of this paint. So um I'd love to talk to you about that because that is something as we start to build buildings, this would be something useful. Um, another idea was um food waste. In terms of climate change, food waste was not talked about and that example, that's humongous for climate change. Um, so what we recommend um to reduce food waste is actually looking at styrofoam. Um, a lot of mom and pop shops here in Sacramento, the city of Sacramento serve food in styrofoam. This is something that McDonald's gave up about forty years ago. This is not only hazardous to our community health, but it also is a large contributor to solid waste and food waste issues. Tourist locations like Old Sacramento, where we're located, it's sending a horrible message to our visitors where they're served food in styrofoam. Um, it's cheap and it sends a cheap message. Um, and we're not cheap here in Sacramento. No. So we don't recommend doing a ban. We don't think that would be a good idea because the margin for small local nonprofit uh for restaurants is very small. But we do suggest a pilot project where a city or other organization with good buying power purchases a large amount of compostable containers and sells it to our city restaurants at the same price as styrofoam. And that way uh we can help with the new law, the food waste law with Sacramento, with uh California. So, thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you to all the people that called in. All right, um, do I have members still up or um? Oh, I do have members. Okay, let, let's now take uh council comments. Right, it was not on the agenda. I'm sorry, Councilmember LaLoli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we, are we uh making announcements?
Yeah, make announcements.
Great, thank you very much. Um, just very quick, um, this Thursday, April twenty-eighth at noon is the twentieth annual Police Sheriff Memorial Remembrance Ceremonial honoring all our um fallen Sacramento officers. During this ceremony, the Police Sheriff Memorial Foundation recognizes all the fallen officers for making the ultimate sacrifice and service to the citizens of Sacramento. The ceremony will take place at the memorial, which is located within the Woodlake Park in District Two. Also look forward to resuming our council meetings in person and the city hall chambers so that we can properly present our official resolution and honor our fallen officers. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence to honor all fallen officers and look forward to seeing everyone that will participate in ceremony this Thursday. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Veng?
Thanks, Mayor. I just um had one announcement and then um just wanted to make a request for the log. Um, the first announcement is uh that our Dream Big Listening Session, number three of the seven, is happening tomorrow in the Detroit neighborhood uh which is um right next to the Hundred and Two Acres and just wanted to invite the public. Um, if you have an RSVP already, you can go to hardandhustle.org backslash listen to sign up for the remaining um five sessions. Um, so tomorrow is at Susan B. Anthony, that's seven eight six four Detroit Boulevard uh and inviting the public to join us for that. Um, and the second piece uh, Mayor, is just, um, I just wanted to uh make, make a quick comment. I know that Item sixteen and eighteen was moved um and that we'll have an opportunity to uh discuss um the various departments uh for our citywide youth investment in the upcoming weeks of what the various departments are doing. Um, but with the increased gun violence in our city, um, I know that um our priorities and needs among our youth um and young adults will continue to increase. Um, and also given that the summer is just around the corner, I think it's really important to make sure that this council have a better understanding of what our citywide strategy is to actually reduce violence through evidence-based prevention and community violence interruption programming. Um, so I'd like to make a request and maybe this was going to be part of item, um, item eighteen that was moved, but I'd like to make a request for our staff presentation to share really our city strategies uh in terms of community prevention and um community violence interruption uh throughout our city uh for this summer and for, for future weeks to come.
And that is the, I think, the point of the hearing. Uh, just a couple of weeks for additional preparation and some additional thinking, but I think that's exactly the point.
Okay, that's great, Mayor, because uh when I was reading the staff report, I didn't see that piece in particular. I think it was just looking at Yipsey, um, PD and one more department, but uh it didn't, I just wanted to make sure that when that I did, that does come back, I like to see um staff present on a citywide strategy really around the, the violence interruption um piece. That's going to be absolutely critical, given that summer is around the corner.
Uh, okay, did ensure that that's a, that that's a clear focus.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'll make sure of that. Okay. Very good. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, Mayor, this is actually just a thank you to staff. Um, I'd like to shout out Lieutenant Stephen Moore and Captain Vance Chandler uh in North Sacramento and the North Command and David Adrosalon on Public Works for helping me expedite a pod cam installation at Nino's Park. This area has been uh plagued with some gun violence and um this is going to be a big deterrent for the greenhouse, for mutual housing in that area. This is a really important project that I actually had funded quite a long time ago, but we had supply chain issues. And of course, you know, the pandemic got in the way. But we finally got the pod cams installed and I'm just very grateful to PD and Public Works for making this project come to fruition so we can bring some deterrence and safety to Nino's Park. Thank you, Mayor.
That's excellent. Uh, Mayor Protim Getta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thank you and then one announcement. First to thank our uh all of the officers and, and our department who uh responded to the hostage situation on Fifty-Eighth Avenue and resulted in a branch into the suspect, the victim, and no one injured at the um, from the incident. Uh, so I really appreciate uh their um, their response there and uh, and also uh later in the day, follow through with reaching out to uh some of the community members there on Fifty-Eighth, um, on Fifty-Eighth Street. Uh, and then uh, uh, announcement here, um, uh, on Twenty-first Avenue this Saturday uh from nine AM to ten AM, we're going to have a, a listening session on envisioning, uh, re-envisioning Twenty-first Avenue. How do we envision the future of Twenty-first Avenue? I hope you guys will join us. It's early, but you know, uh, early bird gets the worm. We'll join you, join me at nine AM and members of the community on the corner there of Twenty-first Avenue and Sixty-second Street to uh, to have a chat about what do we see? The fifteen acres of the parkway. It is a community, uh, the park, the the parkway there on Twenty-first Avenue is between both the Tahoe Park, Talik Village, Colonial Heights, Colonial Manor and Colonial Village community. Uh, traditionally, it's almost been a divider of the communities and we kind of look at how can this can be a uniter of all of those great neighborhoods? So um, uh, with that, hope to see everybody at nine AM Saturday, this April thirtieth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember or Mayor Protim. All right, members. Is there anything else to come before the city council this evening? If not, thank you to the public. Again, thank you to the staff, thank you to the members. Uh, we are adjourned.